Good evening. I'm so ready to meet in the City Council and the Mayor's Public Interior Authority, Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. There was no council executive session. The six o'clock portion of the city council meeting was recessed by the clerk until six o'clock. Authorization by AB 361, the members of the council members may be attending this meeting via Microsoft Teams. We will call.
Councilmember Campbell. President Evans.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Your Honor, I have a request for an excused absence for Councilmember Merritt and Mayor Wilton.
We're going to make a motion.
I move that we excuse their absences.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second call, we vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Belt.
I always want.
Yes. Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please join me standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance will be read by Councilmember Belt. Our Father in Heaven bless this town and its citizens. Guide our council and city staff in their judgments and deliberations. Bless those who traveled these desert highways to come to our crown jewel in the desert. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Join me in splitting our glorious flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prove your agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt here. It appears that we will not have a forum for items.
Seven, eight, and nine.
Seven, eight, and nine. So with that, I would ask on both sides to continue those matters, those matters to your next available meeting.
I will move to continue those matters to the next available meeting.
I'll second it.
No, I'm sorry. I think the mayor can just, the mayor can just announce that they're continuing to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, seven and eight, excuse me, I missed call.
And.
Item seven and eight are continued on to our next meeting. We have a motion for your approval again from Councilmember Campbell, we had a second from someone.
Councilmember Belt.
Councilmember Belt. Call for a vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Selt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Conflict of interest, do we have any conflict of interest to report?
Your Honor, I did on items seven, eight, and nine, but now I don't.
Isn't item nine still on the agenda?
It was already continued.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? See none? Introductions, we have any previous city council members? See none? Pardon?
Mr. Terrell.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Tim Terrell right here in the front row, thank you, Tim, for your service. And now we'll go to item one, is update by the San Bernardino County Fire Chief, Daniel Muncy. Dan?
Vice Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to come out, I'm Dan Muncy, I'm the Fire Chief for the county of San Bernardino. It's always a pleasure coming out here. It's simply put, I grew up in a small community, Yucca Valley, and I've spent most of my career out in the desert, and when I come to councils that feels like home, well, this is one of them. I want to talk a little about the fire district, I was here probably about a year and a half ago, two years ago, talking about the FP5 repeal. FP5 is the fire tax that the citizens of Needles, and in fact, the vast majority of our fire protection district pays into, the total of that across the entire jurisdiction's forty-two and a half million dollars. That money's used to provide the best public service that we can, and in the city of Needles case, that money funds about three-quarters of the station. My early years, twenty-seven years ago, my father was the division chief who oversaw the city of Needles, and I remember coming out even before I started and visiting the community, and back then, the community had volunteers, they had a couple of paid captains, Bobby Lyons, of course, you guys all remember Bobby, and they did a fantastic job, they really did. And over the years.
Is now joined.
Welcome. Over the years, the city of Needles chose to go with the full-time staff, now there's advantages to both, we always like to see community volunteers and people giving back to their communities, in fact, that's how I started, and that's how Chief Tuttle started, together as paid call firefighters. What we're seeing across the nation is a decrease in volunteerism, and I'm not sure why, but I think that you, are any members of Rotary here?
Where are you, Biden?
If you remember back Rotary twenty years ago, or thirty years ago, or the Lyons Club, or the Elks Club, or those other organizations out there, they were full of membership, and there was a society that spent a lot of time giving back to the community, and it's fading, and it's a little sad. And we're spending a lot of time in the fire department right now, reaching out to the communities, and we're encouraging local community members to give back, as a matter of fact, we'll pay you to be full-time firefighter, paramedics, for the first time in my career. When I first started, when I stood in line to get this job, when Chief Tuttle stood in line to get this job, there was three thousand people standing with us, all with applications in their hand, because it meant something to be a firefighter, whether it was volunteer or professional firefighter, for the first time, we're seeing that waning, and as we're doing our recruitments, simply put, we cannot hire enough paramedics to fill our ranks like we once did. I talked to my own kids, my own sons, they're twenty-two and twenty, and I asked them, do you want to be a firefighter? And they say, no, no, this is not the job for me, and I recently went to Supervisor Rutherford, who's our second district supervisor, I went to a community youth council that she had, and the room was filled with fifty youths, and the sheriff was there, Sheriff Dykes, and he spoke about becoming a deputy, and he asked the kids, and I say kids, they were from sixteen to eighteen, if anybody wanted to be a sheriff deputy, and not one person raised their hand. Well, you all know that sheriff deputies and firefighters, we have a little rivalry, and it's more than just donuts and ice cream, well, it's actually a lot about that, but I thought it would be funny, and I'm going to show the sheriff up right now, and I asked, I asked the young adults, yeah, but how many of you want to be firefighters? And over the years, the previous years that I've asked that, all the hands went up, male and female, and this time, two people, two people, which we'll mention, that's two more than he got. But with becoming professional firefighters, it's hard to find volunteer firefighters as well. Across the nation, it's just getting more difficult, on top of that, the state of California has come out with regulations, when I first started, they said, well, you want to be a firefighter, you need to be an EMT first, so I went, took the EMT school to make sure that I could provide medical aid without the department assuming some sort of liability because I was doing something wrong, and they gave me a task book, and it was about eleven pages, and I went to training every Tuesday, every Thursday, every Saturday, for a few months, until they said, okay, you're ready to do a write-out, don't do anything, you're just, you're there to watch the firemen, okay, if they ask you to do something, only do that, but I did a write-out, and I learned this craft. Now, the state of California, when you want to be a firefighter, it's a manual this thick. Recently, we looked at, what does it take to take a community volunteer and send them through that state requirement? And it's every single weekend for eighteen months, both Saturday and Sundays, it's tremendous, and a lot of it has to do with the liability and what we've learned over the last twenty-seven years in the job about some of the dangers, cancer, for instance, the way we approach everything from how we clean our turnouts to structure fires and our breathing support has changed greatly because we were losing too many firefighters to cancer, but let's get back to the point tonight. The district's done some amazing things, last time I was here, I talked about we were starting an emergency communication nurses system, we were putting nurses in our dispatch, and I mentioned that near, one of the last calls that I ran as a captain, wearing the red helmet on the fire engine, I went to a medical call, and I walked in, and the person on the couch, the man, was screaming and holding his back, and I went up to him, and I said, sir, my name's Dan, I'm a firefighter, I'm a paramedic, I'm here to help you, and I went to reach for him, to touch him, and he started screaming at me, don't touch me, don't touch me, and I said, okay, and he goes, I just need you to move that TV over six months, six inches, I can't see it, and that's what he wanted, he called the fire department to move that TV six inches. That, too, has changed in the fire service, when I first started, we had what we called then legit medical calls, people called us because their mom had a heart attack, their grandma was having a stroke, somebody's heart stopped beating, somebody was in anaphylactic shock, somebody broke a femur, somebody was in a really bad car accident, but over time, people have gotten used to calling 911 for a variety of services. This emergency communication nurses system, here's what happens, as you call 911, the dispatcher's going to ask you a series of questions, and they're going to ask you the life-saving questions first, they're going to say, are you having trouble breathing, or is the patient having trouble breathing, are they breathing, are they moving, are they talking, and if you answer no to any of those questions, you're immediately getting a response code three with the fire engine with paramedics on. But the longer they talk to you and ask questions, the more likely that it's not a life-threatening emergency, and we categorize those emergencies, we do what's called emergency medical dispatching. Echo emergency, that means code three with that fire engine, we're sending an ambulance, you are going to need to go to the hospital, lights and sirens, and we're going to get you in the emergency room, maybe even into the operating room. Delta means you need to go to the emergency room, not code three, not lights and siren. Charlie means you need to go to the emergency room, but it's not emergent, Bravo means you probably could go to an urgent care, but California law will not allow the ambulances to transport to an urgent care, we're required, Mike Loenthal's required, to go to the emergency room, and then Alpha calls means that you probably could just go to your doctor. So what our nurses do is they receive those Alpha calls, and some of what we call Omega calls, which are even lower than Alpha, they talk to them on the phone, and this emergency communication nurses system, the idea is to give the right care at the right time to our citizens, so they can avoid that expensive emergency room visit, that expensive ambulance ride, that is effectively reducing the calls that we go on, so that we're going back to those emergency calls. Here in the city of Needles, I don't need to tell you what I got in my car in San Bernardino, and I drove fifty-five all the way here. And it took me an hour and a half, no, I'm just kidding. It took quite a while, and you are a ways away from service, and Chief Tuttle may come up here and talk about the fire you had the other, the other day, and we sent resources from San Bernardino out of Devoire, believe it or not, some of our heavy equipment came to help put the, put the building down so that we can put that fire out, we sent resources all the way around. The city of Needles doesn't have a lot of neighbors, we rely on those fire departments across the river, they're great partners, we just recently donated some water tenders and some fire engines to them, to thank them for their contributions, we rely on our Havasu Lake Station, we, all the way out to Joshua Tree and Twenty-Nine Palms comes out here to support the city. And as we look at funding, we wish that there was more funding available, what we have is property tax that pays for about a quarter of the station, we have general fund support, the county board supervisors gives the South Desert Service Own, which Needles is part of, two million dollars for operations. Now, the South Desert Service Own is the Morongo Basin, meaning from Yucca Valley, Joshua Tree, Yucca Mesa, Twenty-Nine Palms, Havasu, and Needles, but they give two million dollars, and then FP5 is the fire tax that pays the remainder. We're looking to find additional funding, we want to have more fire resources here, we want to make sure we have paramedics that are available for, for calls, so how are we doing that? Lately, I've been approaching the federal legislature, our congressman, and I showed them a map of the county, and as you look at the map of the county, there's one thing that really jumps out to me, it's big, but it's also full of federal land. Now, I'm an American, I'm a patriot, and I believe in the federal government, but there's one thing that they don't do that I wish they did, pay taxes. About seventy-five percent of our area, the vast majority of the South Desert Service Own and our North Desert Service Own, seventy-five percent is federal land, there's no revenue that we receive from the federal government, so we've been going to the congressman saying, can we get help? Can you, it's different than any other county where you can have small pockets of federal lands surrounded by municipalities, that's just not the case here, where you can drive two and a half, three hours before you find help. So we've applied for what's called a safer grant, this is a FEMA grant for staffing. We want to increase staffing here in the South Desert and North Desert so that we can have more help here than we want to. We can't ask the citizens for any more money, I will never do that, we are going to live within our means with what we have, we are not going to take it lightly that Needles has said that fire protection is important to this city, and join the county fire with annexation, that means a lot to me, so we're committed to providing you the best service no matter what. When it comes to the repeal of FP5, I can't speak for or against that repeal, even as the fire chief, and being very vested in public safety, it's against the law for me to give an opinion whether citizens should vote for the repeal or not, but I've provided you with the facts, I can provide you with the information, and at the end of the day, the property tax here only pays for a quarter of the station. We have three personnel staffed twenty-four hours, seven days a week with paramedics, we have great equipment, safe equipment, that's able to respond to emergencies, we have resources from out of the jurisdiction, that the moment that Needles is going to be out of place, there's resources that are coming here, when there's a big fire, there's resources coming here, that is, that is how we're funded right now. Changes in our funding mechanism may reduce the way we approach business, we have to, we can't, we can't make money like the federal government, but we're going to actively pursue to find that money. We're going to be innovative in our response, we're going to work hard to reduce the taxpayer burden on emergency services, we recognize that a lot of citizens' taxes go to fire and police here. I'm going to speak a little bit about police, and I mentioned Sheriff Dykes, and I might have actually kind of kidded about him, but I know the sheriff deputy in the back's not paying attention, so he's not going to say anything, I want to say this, I got a smile, he's going to give me that same smile as he pulls me over as I'm leaving. Our sheriff, when Sheriff McMahon left, I thought, oh my gosh, this is the best man I've ever met, and then Sheriff Dykes showed up, and he is every bit as strong as a sheriff, as Sheriff McMahon, our partnership with the fire department and the sheriff is immense, whether it comes to fighting wildland fires together, putting paramedics on the sheriff's helicopter, we just complement each other, our boats are out there on the busy weekend working closely together, that partnership speaks volume, and I'm a very strong supporter of our sheriff's department, so Captain, thank you for what your deputies do every single day. Before I, before I go sit down and enjoy the rest of the meeting, is there any question? Well, let me say this, the repeal for FP5 may happen in June, that's when it's on the ballot, before June, I'd like to come back and I'll give you a presentation like I did last time, that shows you the actual dollars, and I'd like you to show you your budget of where those dollars are going. I recently saw a video clip of Margaret Thatcher, remember Margaret Thatcher? And she was up there, and she said, there's no government money, it's taxpayers' money, and we want to be accountable to that statement, this is taxpayers' money, this isn't fire district's money, so I'd like to come back just before June, probably in mid to late May, and I'd like you to show you the budget, and I'd like to show you where the money goes, and where revenues are coming from, so that you have a better understanding of this fire district. Now, any questions?
I have questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, can you, for the public's knowledge, for all of our knowledge, can you give us a ballpark figure on what it costs to address the fire the other night at River Valley, for that building, for everything that it took to address that, which threatened our city building, the mortuary, and all kinds of things around it, just because people don't understand what it costs to do that, and I know you don't have that number, but.
No, I can estimate it pretty well, when you, you know, thank, thank God for our mutual and odd weight agreements, that means we're asking other resources to send resources to help us, just like we go help them, that's important. If I were to factor in their costs, it's easily over a hundred thousand dollars, if I look at just the county of San Bernardino's cost, our fire protection district, it's going to be between sixty and seventy thousand dollars for that one incident. Now, what becomes problematic is when we have these river bottom fires here in Needles, the ones that go on for numerous days, and you would be surprised how quick those will go into the million dollars, especially if you see any kind of aircraft flying, and we'll do that, if it's threatening structures, if it's, it's not going to be stoppable, we got to fly aircraft, we'll bring in some helicopters generally, some what we call rotary wing, to support the operations here, and on occasion, we brought in fixed wing, but it gets very expensive. Let me tell you, probably the worst fire I've ever fought in my life was here, in Needles, in the summer, and it was a hundred and eighteen degrees, and I'm on the dyke, and I'm putting the fire out, and I'm watching the boats go by, and I'm like, oh. Funny story, we had a crew, a hand crew show up, now county fire, we have our own wildland crews now, two of them, we're actually starting a third one this year through grants. Our, our hand crews and our heavy equipment, they go out there and they work hard for a living to offset the costs, so the city of Needles isn't paying for any of that, they're working hard for that, to get the revenues, but we had a hand crew, and as the bus pulled up at two in the morning, I was in operations, and I looked at the bus, and it said Montana, and it was a tribal resource, a tribal hand crew, and I happened to be sitting there, now, at night, we put out fifty-gallon trash bins full of ice and water for our crews at midnight, you know how hot it is, and this crew from Montana, the door opens, and the first, first crew member gets off.
Steps outside and goes, finally!
And turns around and walks right back in the bus, and they went down like crazy, all, you know, all the next day, because it's, it's that hot, anyway, any other questions for him?
Thank you. No.
I am immensely grateful for that man, he's a great communicator, he's always reaching out to us, and he's asking really good questions, he's advocating for Needles, we're really happy with the strong partnership that we've always had here, and I aim to keep that partnership and be the best partner you ever have, we are proud to be Needles Fire Department, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Muncy, thank you.
Your Honor, did we do public, did we do public comment yet?
No.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, I just want to follow up with Chief Muncy's comments, specifically about the fire the other night, I'm not sure how much of a briefing you received on it, but just to give you a quick little synopsis, it was about ten-thirty on Friday night, we got the first calls of a fire there on F Street, Medic Engine Thirty-Two from right here in Needles was on scene, I don't have the exact numbers, but within five, six minutes, they were on scene and attacking the fire, they quickly realized that they were going to need more resources, so they started calling for mutual aid, so we received mutual aid from Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley, and Bullhead, so they all came and helped us, like Chief Muncy said, mutual aid is, he didn't say this, but he talked about mutual aid, but I will tell you that it's the backbone of the fire service, that's how we help each other out, so they came over and helped us, we also had resources from county fire from Havasu Lake and Twenty-Nine Palms that came out to help, in addition to, as Chief Muncy said, our heavy equipment crew came out with their excavator, just because the way the fire burned the building, it was unstable, we weren't able to go in and fight the fire, we had to stay outside because the building was collapsing, so to control the collapse, we called our excavator out to basically pull the building down for us, and help us mop up and overhaul, make sure there was no more hot spots. The fire is under investigation currently, I, I understand that it was not being used at the time, it was secured, the last we knew, last anybody knew it was secured, so investigators are working hard to figure out what the cause and origin was, thankfully there were no injuries, and the fire did not impact any other property or business around it, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects other than those scheduled, unless you do so at this time, when called by the Vice Mayor, please announce your name and address to the record, in order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit for persons has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Amendment to California Government Code, section five four nine five zero prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Judy?
I'm Judy Thornton, one eight three five South Drive in Mojave Valley, I want to make sure that everybody knows about and is invited to our Route sixty-six Byway Celebration and Info Fair of this Saturday from ten to two at the El Garcis, we have eighteen vendors, including a travel blogger from a Route sixty-six group in Illinois, we're going to do complimentary tours of the El Garcis at ten, noon, and two, we have barbecue in the park, and we, we really tried to market and promote this a lot, so I think we're going to have a nice, a nice amount of people there, so I hope you all will come. Also, we are doing a standing tour of the El Garcis on Saturdays at eleven o'clock now, we have, we've been doing it for three weeks, and we've had three tours, we take, we've done tours all three days, so we're very, very happy about that. Removing this hat and putting this hat on, the Needles Rodeo, because I'm part of the rodeo association, too, we are proceeding cautiously, but we are hoping to have a rodeo April first and second, the Colorado River Medical Center is once again our title sponsor, most of our, I should say most, all of our sponsors are coming back, plus new sponsors, so we're very excited about that, oldest rodeo in the tri-state area, put on by locals, sanctioned by Grand Canyon Professional Rodeo Association, so we hope to see all of you there, and I know people, I can get you on a Bronc or a Bull.
Nice.
Let me know.
Thank you, Mrs. Thornton.
Thank you, Judy.
Sheriff Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle, recently with the strong winds and everything, I noticed that our street sweeper hasn't been in the residential areas, got kind of a rock quarry going on our street with all the loose gravel that's being pushed around, I didn't know if there was an issue with that, or if that was going to be running, because some of them are looking pretty bad. The other thing is, too, is that there was a protest, little rally for the BNSF new attendance policy, if you're not aware of it, it is pretty strict, worse than when I worked for the UP, it's actually making the unfair work environment for these guys, out of the fear of losing their job due to attendance policy, could cause issues for fatigue, and for people missing work, being tired at work, happened a lot at UP, but we had a system that reset after so long, but still, when you're huffing and puffing and trying to get back to work every ten hours, you know, your mind's not in the right place most of the time, especially if you have family that take up your time. The railroad moves through our town, it moves a lot of chemicals, it moves a lot of product, when I was on UP, we moved with TSA, we moved spent nuclear rods to Nevada, we moved a lot of anhydrous ammonia, a lot of chlorine, we've had a lot of trains that have derailed due to people making errors, either unintentionally, or tired, or fatigued, or not, several places have had chemical releases, explosions, things of that nature, we don't want to see that here, if we're going to be putting the employees and the city at danger with this attendance policy, if you got ten or twenty years into a company and that's your career, you may not have something to fall back on to if you got fired, the attendance policy says that you get thirty points for your career, a holiday layoff is ten points, so if you have kids and you take a day off, that's two points, if it's a weekend, it's four points, so on and so forth, so you could see how people who don't want to lose their job and are invested in this and don't want to try to do a new career path, either because of their medical condition, their physical condition, or they don't have anything else to fall back on to, they will make concessions to go to work tired, they They will make concessions to go to work when they're not ready to go to work, which is again going to put them in danger, us in danger, and every community that they move that train through in danger. So if you're not aware of it, you need to be aware of it and we need to do what we can to address this issue and make sure that we know as a community that this may potentially put all of our lives in danger and make the fire department work that much harder when the city has to be evacuated for a chemical release. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public opinions, anyone else? Not, we'll move on. Item number three. NPUA Council Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The, you know, any member of the council, uh, action, a member of the public may address the, I'm sorry, prior to NPUA council action, a member of the public may address the NPUA slash city council matter scheduled on the consent calendar, a three-minute timeline per person applies. Recommend the action as approved items three through four on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Does anyone want to pull either of the items? Not entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell, second by Councilman Belt. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of the consent calendar. Item five. NPUA slash council, revise NPUA and city budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Five A, NPUA, Resolution Number zero two zero, twenty twenty-two, NPUA adopting the revised budget for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, amending Resolution Number zero six, zero eight, five oh two one, NPUA. And five B is a council Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, adopting the revised budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, amending Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one.
Mr. Mayor, before Sylvia gets started, we went through the budget reviews and everything is, seems to be generally on track. We met with the Budget Committee, a subcommittee of the council, and they were recommending approval of the budget revisions. And then Sylvia's available.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. Not a lot of changes to the NPUA budget. The few that we have are substantial in nature. Just wanted to mention the rate increases that occurred in October of twenty twenty-one. We have increased the water revenue line item by thirty thousand eight hundred and the electric revenue by four million three hundred and twenty-two thousand. For the budgeted expenditures in electric, as you know, the power costs are exorbitant at this time. We have increased the power cost purchase line item by three million five hundred thousand and cost of material have increased as well. We're putting in six hundred thousand more in that line item. Any questions on the NPUA budget? Onto the city budget. For the most part, there were some minor changes to this budget. Generally speaking, the general fund revenue projections are being met and are at fifty-one percent as of December thirty-first, which is the date of this information. I'd like to turn your attention to page five that summarizes the major changes on the general fund budget. And I will review briefly the items that are over five percent. For engineering, there's an, an additional ninety-three hundred dollars for general engineering consulting costs. We have a lot more projects going on and that is the increase reflected there. Code enforcement has an increase in overtime costs due to the Jack Smith Park Patrol and callouts, as well as additional legal fees for their abatement liens and due process, et cetera. In public works and parks, building and grounds, the golf maintenance department, which is being taken over by Touchstone, we had to transfer those full-time employees over to our departments. So they were transferred to public works and parks. That is seeing an increase in the salary cost for the balance of the year of sixty-one thousand each. For cemetery, cemetery is seeing an increase in burials, so we increased that line item by ten thousand dollars. Grant funds, just showing new projections on those funds as well as a city match for the I forty J Street Connector project that was finalized at the end of last fiscal year. So now we have to put in the city's match. In addition, sanitation had a three point three percent increase effective January first, and there are also more customers. And let's see, for the internal service funds, front office, we're proposing to add one new full-time employee, customer service clerk to help with increased workloads, cross-training and department coverage. There were no changes in the golf fund, the transit front fund or SADA. Are there any questions on these budgets? Budget revisions?
Right. I would like to comment on public works expenditure increase from sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand for a tractor. I just think it's just amazing. I wonder if you could give us a little information on that, but.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In many of last years, April and May, the cemetery, public works, maintains a sense that parts, by the name of an impact. And so a tractor with equipment on it. At that time, the estimated cost was sixty-five thousand dollars for backhoe, bucket loader and the like. That cost today is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. If we can get. So that's just equipment costs. So we're shopping, the used market. We're looking at all the options, but that's the effect of inflation and that's the effect of identified.
Thank you.
It's a, creates a problem and we're seeing that all across the platform.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I also want to point out, we have an options list for public works.
Good.
Well, I almost forgot. To replace all the street signs, the stop signs within the city in four phases is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Jesse proposed that we do this in four, four years, so it'd be sixty-five thousand for this current year. That's on the options list. It is not included in this spreadsheet unless you approve it to be included in the budget.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the street signs, which are, you know, Rey Buena Vista, sale, they're ready. Half of our signs are missing. The other half you can't read because they've peeled off. So I asked Jesse to put together a replacement program and he's laid out a four-year, sixty-five thousand dollars a year, replacement program for those signs. Now, they are critical for public safety response, fire and police. So it's important with these that we get into a program of replacing these and then a maintenance program. So I wanted to bring that to you and ask that you amend the budget to include that sixty-five thousand. It would come out of your reserve. Currently have about eight hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in reserve. Thank you, Sylvia.
Your Honor?
Yes.
On, on that, can we put the stop signs at the top of that list? Stop signs being faded or missing is a liability to our city. I, I would put those at the front of the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or deliberations by the council? Seeing none, questions or deliberations by the public for either the NPUA budget or the city council budget? If not, return to the council for vote. Let's take each budget separately on separate motions. I'll entertain a motion for the NPUA budget.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Longacre, second by Councilmember Campbell. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
The second is a motion for the city council budget.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Are we going to add in, does this need to add in, those signage with it?
Yes, this is where.
We go out. So a motion approved with the add-in of the four-year sixty-five thousand for signage.
Yes, wait. Go ahead.
Wasn't it in four stages?
Yeah, sixty-five thousand per year.
Per year, yeah, yeah. Okay, I thought you said four years for sixty-five thousand.
Four years, sixty-five thousand per year.
Yeah, I think, I think we understand. All right.
Fire sale.
We have the motion, we have a second call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of the joint council NPUA meeting and community city council meeting, public hearings. Public hearing notice to consider all residents and testimony or against prioritizing and approving the dollar amount of Needles eligible projects for the community development block grant CB, CDBG funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As some of you may recall, three years ago, we borrowed ahead three years of our long range funding of thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year and used it to do the improvements up at the Rexon. While that period is run and we're now at an annual allocation. So what's it, John, working with the counties to do, well, block grant program is seventy-nine hundred dollars for senior center, for senior citizens' transportation services. Now, this is federal money that has to be spent in the benefit of low and moderate income. And the other is a sidewalk, curb, gutter replacement program. So cracked sidewalks, deteriorated sidewalks.
I got a list.
Yeah. So this would go to those areas, predominantly low and moderate income areas for sidewalk repairs.
Ask a question, Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Does that count for some places where there's non-existent sidewalks? Or is that a totally different subject?
This is, this is just, this is just repair.
Okay, just asking. Thank you.
Other question by the council? I open the meeting now to public hearing. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll return to the council for a discussion and deliberation.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Here we have a motion by Councilmember Belt. We have a second by Councilmember Campbell. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on now to a public comment pertaining to council items, three-minute timeline per person applies. Council, the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute timeline per person applies. Recommended action is approval of items ten through twelve on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Does anyone like to pull any of the items?
Yeah.
For discussion, yes.
Can we pull eleven? I just want to ask some questions on it.
All right, item eleven. And anyone else? No, entertain a motion to approve ten and twelve and pull item eleven.
Your Honor, I will move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven, go ahead.
My only question is, I know we're splitting this between the city, us and the county, but I just want to know when we'd be able to get these updates. This would be for Captain Ross on the, all these information that is said on the list. The following is a list of duties, so some of these things, when we can get updates on these information, like when is it going to be? There was one on here. Get crude explorers, all these things, do we get updates on them? You can't hear me? When do we get updates on these items that they're doing? I just wanted to know if we can get that from you, like what this, what's happening with this person and their, what they're doing? Or just, just to see what, what's happening. These are all, these are all great things they're doing and I like to.
Well, and a lot of these are ongoing. We're constantly recruiting for explorers. We push all that out on our social media. All our events, we push out on social media. She's been working with the schools on programs for the kids, drug prevention programs. We're working on an every fifteen minutes program. We're going to work with county fire, their public safety agencies to show the kids the dangers of alcohol abuse and drug abuse, especially when driving. So, you know, all of these things are kind of ongoing. Some of it has been a little restricted because of the restrictions in the schools and, but she's been working on all of these things constantly.
Do we get, is there a way that she could just get updated, like this we are, this quarter, this half a year, by annual, something that just explains these? These are great things and I just would like to just reiterate them to the public.
Weekly rest log that's published weekly on our Twitter and all our social media. She pushes out all the press releases, handles press inquiries, but yeah, we can put them, essentially she does these throughout the year, but we can put together some information for you.
Yeah, it's just, I like to let people know what we're doing, especially when we're putting out another. I mean, it's great. These things are, these are very good things that we're doing this, through the school and that's, and I mean.
Yeah, she also works with the rec center. All the, all the school, school, the different schools in town. I mean, next week, we're walking with the kids at the elementary school. They do the type of exercise.
Walk club.
Walk club they're doing, so we walk with the kids. It's all good, it's all good. We really enjoy it.
No, and we, I appreciate it and thank you. I think sometimes we don't get enough recognition on the things that are getting done, so I, I like.
Well, and that's why we, we try and push out through all our three social medias, all those things, so people can see on an ongoing basis in real time what we're doing. So that's why I encourage people to look at our social media directly, our Twitter, our Facebook and our Instagram account, because whichever social media you have, it's there. So.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add to what Tana was saying. I think for us as a council, you know, we're really pushing to make sure that the public, but they're not here listening to us tonight, but we have to be accountable to them. They will ask us questions out there and we want to make sure that they're being told, whether it be by press release, from the city, saying this is what we're doing. We are doing things because people say, well, you aren't doing things. And there are, there are many things that you're doing. The school resources office, I have nine children, I've had foster children, the resources officers that we have had throughout all the years that I have been in this school district, thirty-seven of them, have been fabulous. They, they've been awesome. They've been the greatest asset to the parents, but to the children and become friends of those children. So all of the things that your resource offices, officers provide to our children and to, to the school district is absolutely beyond.
Well, and this is under school resource officer, this is not a sworn position.
Right, this is something.
Resource officers are sworn deputies. This is more of a community engagement, public information position. And all of that information, again, is on our social media. We post things daily on there.
And we'll be glad to add to that.
People go directly there and they can get information almost daily on what we're doing.
Like we tell people, come to city council and you'll know what we're doing and you'll really know, you'll hear it firsthand, but going to your social media.
It feels nice to have it.
So, thank you.
Yeah, but we can, we'll put together the information.
Direct people to your social media. We could direct them too, when they ask us.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I encourage that.
That would be a good resource for us.
I encourage that. And with our social medias, also publish the non-emergency number to share. to Sheriff's Dispatch, because the number here at our office is the business line. So if you need our services and it's not an emergency, call the non-emergency number to Dispatch, seven six oh, nine five six, five thousand one. We've been pushing that out, you know, if you see something, call us, that's what we do, that's why we're there, we have dispatchers on duty twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, so we want people to call, if they see suspicious people, if they see anything out of the ordinary, give us a call, we'll respond, we respond to all our cars, calls for service.
You do, your dispatch must not like a lot of us here in Needles, it's so hard, we're so used to saying it's this street, or it's that house, or it's that place, and it's like.
Well, every, every address verifies in our CAD system, just keep in mind, if you're on your cell phone, it's not gonna show your address, so you might have to know that, we encounter that a lot, people calling their cell phones and they don't know where they are, that's why the street signs would help.
Yes, and, and addresses in the front of houses, having, which is required by law for the fire department to find your burning house, for the law enforcement to find your problem.
If it's on fire, generally, they can find it. Sometimes you have to point it out to them.
Yeah, but it could be not a fire, it could be a stroke or a heart attack.
But I know fire, and we have computer systems and mapping in all of our vehicles, which will take us right to the address if we have it, so that's why it's, it's good to have that address.
Good to have addresses on the front of.
Our intersections.
As required by our city ordinance, to have addresses on our houses. Just thought I'd put that little plug in. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Belt? Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
She's sorry. End of the consent calendar, regular items. Now, item thirteen, clear the golf, clear the golf fund deficit by transferring from the general fund reserves of two million eight hundred thousand dollars by February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the golf course was built by the residents of the community in nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-one. Over the last two decades, the golf fund has run a deficit which has accumulated to be two point eight million dollars. Last year, council directed and we contracted out the operation of Pro Shop plus the maintenance. And this, we're on track to add a net positive cash as a result of those decisions. The question now really is, what do we do with this two point eight million that's been, that's been obligated to date and is on the books? Because it is dragging down the overall credit rating worthiness of the city. So Sylvia has been working on a strategy that would eliminate that, that opinion on other funds that are in the general fund. So instead of having six point nine billion dollars with a negative two million, two point eight million, what we do is we would have a zero in the golf fund, and that top line number six point nine would be reduced by two point eight. So it's clean, cleans up our financial statement, it is not spending money, it is wiping out long accumulated debt.
That is correct.
Questions and discussion by the council?
No, I, I guess the key is just transferring from one fund to another fund.
Yes.
So we're transparent.
Can we buy a tractor with some of that money?
You can do a GoFundMe.
I need to.
No, no question. With that, move to approve.
We all motion?
I move to approve, transfer.
Second?
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Campbell, and a second by Councilmember Belt, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, general plan land use update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at last meeting, you all asked for an update on the general plan development. We are on track to complete the general plan and the environmental analysis associated with it by what Patrick says late summer, but what we've said, I say is August. So we are still on track for that program, it's taken us a couple of years to get, to get to this meeting, so we'll begin striking this as a meeting.
Thank you.
August is late summer for everybody but us.
I know.
And October is late summer for us.
I'm buying summer clothes and all this.
City attorneys, your part?
I have nothing this evening, your honor.
City members, your part?
I do, and I'll be very quick. First of all, we're, we're working with Assemblymember Smith, Therson Smith's office on, he's reintroduced Obernolte's bill on the off-highway vehicle ability to drive those on streets to trade from residences to trailheads, he wants to pick up that bill and run with it, Patrick's working with him. I'm gonna pass out a list, we put the street program for this upcoming year out to bid, we got one bidder, it's the same company that did it last year, so it did a tremendous job for us, and so what we're doing is about, we're only able to do about five hundred and seventy-five thousand of city streets. So we will be, we're gonna bring this to you at your next meeting to ward of that work off, but within six weeks, we'll be back with the rest of the list for this year. We have problems getting enough engineering work done on there, so K Street, L Street, D Street, J Street, J Street again, L Street, Needles Highway, Flutmendez Parkway, so we're gonna do two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars worth of work on Flutmendez Parkway, which will be, is in front of Duke Wharton, so we'll have a new road through there. And then, public parking lot at city hall. What we did is we went to the public, and we said, we already have a paving contractor that's gonna be in town, does any commercial enterprise or private residents want to repave their driveway, repave their parking lot, and be able to capitalize on paving company being here in town? We received twenty-nine responses, which total two point nine million dollars of private property paving projects. So what we, and we looked at, and these would be hundred percent payable, for example, Needles Point Pharmacy wants to settle right after the county wants to, but one of the prevailing paving of this parking lot out. So we will get this to them, we will ask them, do they want to proceed with it, and then we'll then make sure that it gets done. Now, initially, I thought we would, as a city public works, would manage that construction. Instead, what I found is I can save considerable amount of money by contract, by having the paving contract, contract directly with these twenty-nine parts, thirty, excuse me. So for example, let me use Needles Marina, which is the next to us on the back, they want to repave a hundred and one thousand square feet down at the marina. The quote that we got was two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the work. And then, the five percent management fee that we would charge for having to do all the paperwork on that prevailing wage is ten thousand dollars, so for a total of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Instead, it's much of an alternative where if the paving contractor contracts directly with the property owner, it's not a prevailing wage project, and it would only cost that property owner one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So it's a net savings to the individual of thirty-four thousand dollars. So it becomes a win-win proposition. So people doing private projects are gonna exceed what we're doing on the public streets that's going. We'll be back with additional, probably, you know, threefold of, of street paving and water money improvements. We are beginning to repair manholes, we have, many of our manholes are brick, and those are just brick stacked, they go down to sewer pipes, we're, we're rebuilding three of those, the graffiti out on the, the east end interchange that was on the back of the shopping center, that's gone. We encourage them to keep it, buy an extra couple buckets of paint, because that's a newly discovered canvas that we want eliminated, we don't want graffiti there, the new golf carts will be delivered February eighteenth. I've been meeting with the Indian Food Restaurant regarding a relocation, I'm working with the property owner there about getting that relocated, the neighborhood renewal program, where we're providing twenty thousand dollars to help people upgrade their homes, roof, new roof, all that, we have three houses that'll be under construction in the next ten days, so that's gonna be exciting. The Eagle Scout candidate finished repainting the bathrooms that cross the street here, so we're excited about that, we have the well, we're ready to do the groundbreaking, we're gonna send you an availability request for the week of the twenty-first, and if any of you can attend, we'll have a groundbreaking, and this is the sign that will be at that construction site.
Wow.
And I've got Carson's name spelled right? We're starting off using all of the initial one point, or little over a million dollars to start the drilling, but eventually, the well will cost about five point two, and the state's doing their final review and awarding the rest of that grant now, but we want to get started, I don't want to go through much of the summer with having to rely on only one well, we've seen what that looks like. I made another note, I keep repeating it. Be glad to answer any questions now, or tomorrow, later, good night, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Hi, I sit on the recycling board of the authority for the recycling, and we have our meeting this coming Thursday, and one of the things that we're working towards is bringing a, what is it, what do they call it, Rick?
It's a reverse vending machine.
Reverse vending machine, where you put your recyclables in, and it reads them, so you can't cheat, California CRV only, your aluminum cans, California CRV, which we all pay, but we can't return them anywhere, and that machine will go in and will give you a voucher, and then you will get paid. The, the things that have to be worked out is where is it going to go, the first thought was with the grocery store, and although they are open to that, I don't know how that will work with what they're putting up there, the two different stores, a garden center, if that happens, if there will be room up there, Rick has said that it could go on the city property, but it's the vendor, the, the store, or the establishment that has to give out the money, you bring the voucher, and then they give you the cash, and so they work that out with the county. So that's what we're working on right now, is, is trying to get one of those reverse vending machines here for all of this California CRV in our city, so that people can get their money back for what they pay, because we don't get anything back, and you cannot fill up a truck and drive it to Victorville, you're not allowed to do it, it's, it's not only not allowed, it's, it's not even legal, so, which is strange to me, but I don't, I don't have to get into that, it's just, that's the facts. So that's what we're working on with that, and I'll have more to report on that later, but that, we've been working on that, and that is the only thing, I, oh, there's, oh, I had one other question, I actually, I didn't know who to ask this question of, but I want to find out about starting up or really ramping up neighbor, neighborhood watch programs in our city. So whoever I have to meet with, they're pointing back to Ross, okay, so I'll meet with Ross, and start doing a big campaign for neighborhood watch, for people watching out for their own neighborhoods, watching each other's homes, and reporting, you know, things that are going on in their neighborhoods, so that, that helps the sheriff's department, we don't want to become sheriffs ourselves, we just want to watch our, each other's homes and have each other's backs, thank you.
Councilmember Evans?
A few things, I just want to touch on, on a citizen that I believe was misunderstood in, in public comments a few meetings ago about cleanup, I think he was just asking for basically more understanding of our employees with the community, and I commend the councilors that are getting the cleanups together and everything, I do, I really do. My opinion is, if we keep going forward like we are as a city, and we, we, we provide employment with these people, maybe we should start employing more boots on the ground and, you know, heavier on the scale than more people behind desk, boots on the ground are gonna get basically most kind of employees, I'd like to see that, that's for sure, it's not my decision, but, but we move forward, and, and we have that, that opportunity, and we think about that. Also, I've been contacted by a few, a couple of small cultivation, cannabis cultivations here, like the mom pause, about the annual permit fee, I'd like to see staff maybe break down the permit fee, what it pays for, all of them pay the same, whether, no matter how big they are, square footage, doesn't matter, I'm not saying to go and just rape the bigger ones, but maybe make it fair, let's, I, I think we should look at that. Keep it reasonable for sure, we don't want to run anybody out, that's for sure, we want, we want the business here. Glad to see three hundred J Streets getting something done, hopefully they go fast, because it's uglier than it was, that's for sure. And Rick, Morgan and Ninety-Five, I got a call from one of my neighbors asking why one of my other neighbors was meeting with you, so, about that neighborhood watch, it's going on in my neighborhood, believe me.
It's already there in my.
So, any, any?
No, it was, he, he wanted to point out to me that it appeared that there were some park, no parking signs, and we either stolen or got knocked over, and so I've been working with Jesse to get two new street, no parking signs added, permanent, okay, yeah. Yeah, so it was, they, they should be there, or we're just waiting for the sign back, the wheel, concrete, same hole, concrete.
Sounds good, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Belt?
A couple things, I have, speaking of the cleanups, we want to do, I mean, I would like to get one again like last year, when we do like the Earth Day one, where we can get the Ollie and city employees again, so if we want to plan that, that's like April twenty-second again, to do, so we can get as many, unfortunately, it's a Friday, so I don't know, I mean, unfortunately, because then it's, people are working that day, so one way or another, if we can do that, so we can get a commute, a whole Earth Day cleanup for our town on one of those days, but I think we're trying to get one, Zach and I were talking about on the, did we say March or April, or February, March twenty-sixth?
March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth, the Saturday? We'll pick somewhere to, I talked to, if you want to do it, we do officially have the off-ramp, so if we want to do an off-ramp, I don't know what our thoughts are on.
I'll work with you.
To see if we want to get an off-ramp cleanup. That day, so we can try to get a couple scheduled before the heat come in. That day, so we can try to get a couple scheduled before the heat come in. No, that's what I feel, is invite anybody that we can.
If you got a place that really needs it, speak up.
Yeah, for sure.
Definitely.
And then maybe that Earth Day, when we go back to the Jacksmith, I mean, that seems to be a nice area to, I mean, that's a great area to try to keep cleaned up. Also, if the trucks parking on the road, I know there was like seven today, so I'm, I don't know if Ca- Captain Ross, there's any way you guys can do a little more rounds up there, I know this has been brought up like every single week for us. I just feel like we're not sending the, quite the message out there yet, I mean, maybe there are not enough tickets, I don't know if there are, and we're just not hearing about them, or they're just still parking even with the tickets, because I know Caltrans has put up more signs, they put up those, but they can't put the K-Rail up. So if we can continue to have something to, to try to deter them from parking there, even with the signs, they're still parking there. So, I mean, start more ticketing, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think we need to, if we can meet also on that, so maybe we could set up a meeting with you, Captain Ross, about a few things. And then, Rick, some signs on Bonner Ray and, is it, I think it's L Street, what's that? No, it's not L. Not Goodwill, but the other one, where the, where the, um, mobile station is. It's Ice Plant on the other side, but I don't know that, I forget the name, I would, if there's no sign, no, I'm just kidding. No street sign. But, um, there's still constantly trucks, and now they're moving the boulders over, and there's quite a few urine bottles over there. So maybe more, just signs so we can actually, they are aware, so then tickets can be given. Yeah, but I mean, unless we see them, but at least the trucks parking there, because they're intensely-
They don't pour them out, blows my mind.
I don't know.
What, what?
Don't pour them out. I don't know, but anyways, so those, no. And I think that's it, happy Valentines. Thank you, thank you for the candy.
Councilmember Longacre?
Oh, since we're on signs, did our slow down, curve ahead sign get put up on that curb that I asked twice in the last year, front of Marvin's Mary J, slow down, curve ahead? They, they took it out when they put the sidewalk in, when they rebuilt that dispensary, the sign was never put back. Once again, that's a liability, and I asked three council meetings ago for that to be put in, I also asked for it about a year ago to be put in, so, let's make sure that gets done tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that's all I got, y'all have a nice night.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Are we, I would like to know, are we as a city allowed to weigh in on this situation with the railroad and all, it is a union thing, it is an employment thing?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda tonight. It would normally something-
It's not on the agenda anyway, so we can't talk about it anyway, all right?
I just didn't know it was Zoom something.
All right, it's not on the agenda. Okay, and I have just a couple of, uh, Zoom meetings that I had the first month, the Zoom meeting in San Bernardino with, uh, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, and then, uh, in Los Angeles, the next day, a Zoom meeting with all of the, uh, cities in Southern California, with the, uh, Southern California government meetings, so I attended both of those meetings, and, uh, I'd just like to announce the, uh, executive director of, uh, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority will be out here on February twenty-fourth, he'll be out visiting, he does every couple of years, he comes out and, uh, looks at our audience and looks at what's going on in Needles, and likes to find out where we are and how we're doing, and with that, I'll close the meeting, thank you, happy Valentines.